I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic as one nation, under God, with the people, the majority, and so the
Approval of the agenda. For tonight. The motion.
Mr. President, I move that the board approve the January ninth, two thousand and twenty-three agenda.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Agenda is approved. Next we have report of board members.
Mr. President. I had an opportunity the other night to go to Raytown High School and if anybody likes basketball and if you like girls' basketball, I would recommend that you go to Raytown High School much our girls' basketball team. South High has a very good girls' basketball team also, but Raytown High's girls' basketball team is worth watching. They're fine. They're quick. They're good. They rebound. They shoot. Go see them.
Thank you. Anyone else? We have no other reports for the board members. Next we have the report of superintendent.
So good evening, Chairman Burton, Vice Chairman Plank, Chairwoman Plank, members of the board and members of the Raytown Quality School District. Under the report of the superintendent, eight, one through eight, six are on there for informational items only for our board members. And item eight point seven is for action regarding summer school.
Good evening, President Burton, Vice President Plank, members of the board. It's my pleasure tonight to bring a recommendation to the Raytown Quality School District Board of Education for a partnership for our summer school program. Dr. Tarvin is here tonight to share information and answer any questions that the board may have about a new partner that we are interested in working with to enhance our summer school programming for the summer of two thousand and twenty-three. So I invite Dr. Tarvin to join us here at the table.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
We are looking to enhance our summer school curriculum to make it more hands-on, make it more attractive to our students to come and keep coming to summer school. So Savas is a curriculum partner that we are presenting it for proposal based on the RFP that we did this fall. Savas has a lot of STEM activities that we think will keep kids' interest, help them to see how they can apply their skills into real-world settings. So that is what we are proposing tonight along with the dates for summer school and sites.
How many proposals would you consider?
We received two. And the other proposal was much more expensive, but we actually did not care for it because they did not focus on instructions much. And we felt like Savas had a much stronger focus on instruction. It was better for kids.
Can you speak a little more specifically about what those opportunities look like for the real world learning in STEM and STEM?
So kids will have opportunity to go through a design process across grades K through eight. They will get to see what the process looks like, to think through a problem with that's building bridges or doing things for the environment. And then look at what are some practical ways that they can go through steps of designing solutions to those problems that are very hands-on in the classroom.
So will kids in K eight all be exposed to this Savas program?
Yes. Yes.
So how will it affect the what the teacher in the classroom is doing?
So Savas is providing STEM curriculum for K five and almost all of our curriculum for middle school. So it's turnkey ready curriculum for the teachers so that they will have the resources they need. And the teachers will have access to some professional development as well, so they are prepared to implement those lessons and hopefully make a much more exciting summer for our students.
And it'll make the teacher's job a little bit easier?
Yes, absolutely.
How much of the day will they be spending on this?
About ninety, sixty to ninety minutes depending on the grade level. On the STEM and then they will still have ELA math at all grade levels. Some grade levels will also have science or social studies.
All right. Thank you.
So we are looking at a twenty-day summer school like we've had in the past. We will go, I believe it's June first through twenty-ninth, taking off the nineteenth for Juneteenth.
Mr. President. Hey, do we have any other districts around that have used Savas that you've talked to or have you have you seen kind of what it looks like in in being used?
We have not had any other districts respond back to us. Ray Peck uses Savas for some other curriculum and we are actually using it for our high school social studies curriculum and are very happy with it as well.
And are we going to be able to have an opportunity to get feedback from our families and our stakeholders?
Yes. Yes, absolutely. We send out surveys to both staff and families asking them for how they feel summer school goes each year. And actually, a lot of the reason that we are pursuing this is because of the feedback we got from prior years that the curriculum we had was tired and needed a new look.
And thank you. I really appreciate these changes.
You're welcome.
How much were we paying for our current curriculum?
Our current curriculum, we were spending about sixty to seventy thousand. This is a little more expensive, but we feel like we are going to get more students to come and to keep coming. As I mentioned to you last fall, we had several students who started last summer, but they didn't stay with us throughout the summer. And so that's really something I'm focusing on this year.
And may I add just another component to this adjustment or adjustment in the program, if you will. Dr. Tarvin actually had a focus group with leaders participated on evaluating the effectiveness of this program so that it was not a decision that was made in isolation. In addition to the group that he had with leaders to make this election, he also presented to executive leadership team. And we had the opportunity to ask questions. And what I would say is while I was not familiar with this program or this curriculum prior to, the beauty of it is the way in which it's organized. It's simplistic for our teachers. We will provide them with opportunities for professional development. But the most meaningful aspect is the hands-on approach and the cross-curricular connections that's included in this.
Yes.
So I think it is something that will benefit our children. And so we encourage all of our children to participate in summer school because it's really about meeting them where they are. And so we needed to make an adjustment from the curriculum prior to, as it has been in place, that curriculum was being
Ten to fifteen years.
With about ten to fifteen years. And so again, this, you know, with the use of manipulatives, the hands-on approach, the collaboration, the cross-curricular connections, the communication, all those things that we need for our children to be twenty-first century-ready using those P twenty-one skills. I think it is encompassed within this. The other piece is this is going to be a year's process, a summer school term, and we will be able to reevaluate to make a decision as to whether we will continue down this pathway in the future. So we're not locked in to continue to do this for two to three or four years or even more. We're able to look at it and evaluate its effectiveness by getting feedback from our teachers and our most important customer, our students,
Yes.
to determine if this is an approach that we want to continue to take and invest in.
Mr. President. Dr. Tarvin, do we have a plan in place to kind of promote promote this to our families like the how it's going to change and what it's going to look like, the hands-on? Do they have videos or something that we can put out on social media, that type thing?
What? So tonight is the first step to decide to have summer school. And then Marissa and I will work together to build a campaign to highly encourage our families to know what is new and to participate in this year.
Thank you.
Mr. President. Not advocating the other bid, but why was it ten? Why was it over a million dollars, ten times higher?
I am not really sure. They added some things in like paying for attendance incentives. That wasn't something we felt like we needed to do. We feel like we can do some other things with attendance to encourage kids to come. I am really not sure why it is so vastly different.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. President, I move the board approve this summer script for grades K twelve and that we adopt Savas as a summer school provider at a one-year cost of one hundred and twenty-five thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Motion passes.
Thank you.
The next item for us is the wonderful presentation from our student representatives who are here this evening. So Happy New Year to you ladies.
Good evening, Board of Education, Dr. Martin Knox. First, I want to give on behalf of Student Council a very big thank you to the Raytown Educational Foundation. They provided us cookies for our cookies and cramming sessions for today, tomorrow, Wednesday. And essentially, cookies and cramming is a time where students can come to the library to get tutoring or just a quiet place to study with their friends or by themselves. And we're providing cookies for them just to like give and send them to studies for finals. And today was the first day of it. And we had around seventy students at the beginning, kind of trickled out. I definitely expect more students tomorrow and in the coming days, but we'll see. And then also me and the sophomore class president, Chase Deneer, are going to Missouri Association Student Council's Winter Energizer this Saturday, which is a time for us to like grow as leaders, kind of get our energy back after this kind of like winter blues phase and like get more ideas to bring back to our school for fundraising service, any kind of community stuff, anything in that Student Council area. We are also having our court warming February fourth, which will be a sneaker ball and court warming, we're trying to really like up the ante on it and kind of make it very big in the school. So that will be kind of a challenge, but we're trying our best. And then we also have Into the Woods is starting up for school, the school musical. And everyone is very excited about that. And we're also very excited about the basketball game against South coming up in February. We're trying to plan big for that as well. And then our National Honor Society is doing a Valentine's Day candy and flower gram. So you can like send a note with the arrows or something like that. So those are the things coming up in the next couple of months for us. Is there any questions? They are for anybody. So if you want to stop by. Yeah. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Hi, I'm Karen Barnes. I'm from the Raytown South Student Council. I'm the vice president at our Student Council. This following, well, last year, our last big thing was the Christmas party where we gave to children in the Raytown School District Christmas presents and our teachers provided gifts. And they made which those kids made wish lists and brought it to our schools. And we threw a drive-by celebration for them and gave them their gifts. What we're working on next is opening up our Cardinal shop. It's a place for our Cardinals and teachers to buy gear such as sweatshirts, sweatpants, just to represent our school and, you know, show our spirit. And up next, we're planning on prom, getting themes and venues and things like that. That's what we're doing over at our school. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Good evening, Board of Education and Dr. Martin Knox. Just before winter break, the Culinary Arts students had the exciting opportunity to prepare and distribute five hundred meals for families in our community. This event was made possible through partnerships with Fifteen and the Mahomies, Kids Feeding Kids, Pete's Garden, and Lucky International Trading. If you haven't seen it already, please go to one of our social media channels so you can see the video of this great event. Several RQS high school students made all district or all state congratula- in music, congratulations to Grayson Halsel, Joel Martinez, Caleb Pennington, who we'll hear more about momentarily, Oscar Peraza, and Philip Wolf. Also, we have a bond forum coming up on Tuesday, January twenty-fourth at six P M. And this forum will be held virtually. We'll be sharing more details soon on our social media, so stay tuned. And lastly, we, this month, we are recognizing Caleb Pennington as our ray of hope honorary. We have a video about why Caleb was chosen.
Hi, I'm Gretchen Kemp. I'm the choir director at Raytown South High School. And I'm going to tell you about why Caleb Pennington is a ray of hope to our district. Caleb has excelled academically and musically through all of high school. He is one of our advanced course students, taking all the advanced courses he can and is in choir and orchestra and does extracurricular activities as well, such as our musical, where he's been a lead for several years. He has excelled with straight A's in all of his classes. And Caleb is one of my tenor leaders in our choirs here. And he is also a leader in our state of Missouri. Caleb has been selected for the second year in a row for the sight singing B at Allstate. This means he is one of the top thirty sight readers in the state of Missouri. This is a huge, huge deal and one of the only ones from our district to get to go. He will go to our Allstate Conference in the Ozarks and has examples to sight read for judges, which means he's singing something he's never seen before. But not only that, Caleb is a ray of hope by being selected for the honorable mention, mention choir in Springfield at the MCDA Conference this summer. He will get to sing with other students from around the state of Missouri and a clinician for several days while they're there practicing and then performing. Caleb is one of the top tenors in our state, and that's why he was selected for this through his Allstate audition.
Congratulations, Caleb, and I would ask you to join us.
So you gonna sing something for us?
Thank you.
Where are you gonna go to school?
Oh, looking at Oklahoma University.
I just happen to have some lyrics here.
Well, congratulations. That's fantastic.
We have no one for our public comment period. Next we have our board committee reports. Finance Committee. Report.
No other report unless you'd want to go ahead and make the motion.
Yes, make the motion, please.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Do we have any reports from the other committees?
Policy Committee is meeting after this meeting. That's all.
I believe in the curriculum, we have another meeting and we have some changes that we're working on with the Middle and High School Career and Educational Planning Guide, which was discussed last time.
Okay. The Culture and Climate Committee. We plan to have a meeting either during, before next month's meeting. I think that's it for the reports of committees. Next we have resignation of board member. The board has received official letter of resignation from board member Donna Payton.
Mr. President, I move the board accept the resignation of board member Donna Payton as presented.
Motion has been made and seconded. I think the board we plan to post this vacancy and have these, those applications be received prior, prior to the election. However, the, we'll probably do our first introduction of those candidates after the election. Have those candidates come and introduce themselves to us who would like to be appointed to that position. That position will complete the term of Donna Payton. And and so it'd be for one year and that, so that vacancy that we feel probably in May will be have to run for election in April of twenty-four. So any, anybody interested in being a board member should apply. You'll see those, that posting out here in the next few days.
Mr. President. Yes. I just wanted to say a word. I was, I was hoping Donna could be here tonight, and I think we just all would agree that it's been a pleasure to serve with Donna. So I was hoping she'd be here, we could say, by, hopefully we'd send the standard, you know, proclamation, thankful appreciation proclamation and just, you know, she's been a short time here, but she's been active and really gotten into the information to the details. And so she's been a good board member and appreciate having her and, and she will still be an asset, a help to us being on the Jackson County Legislature. So I'm glad we have, have her there and will be helpful to us in the future. So sorry to see her go.
Thanks, Rick. Motion passes. Purchase of student devices.
I move the board pre-purchase four hundred and seventy I O O E Chromebooks and two hundred and fifty one hundred E Chromebooks from CDWG for a total amount of two hundred and fifty thousand, one hundred dollars.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Melissa, you got a comment?
Good evening, Board of Education, Dr. Martin Knox. This is a standard purchase. We applied for emergency federal funds through a COVID funding at the federal level a little over a year ago. The approval process was just delayed. At, and we just received notification that we are approved for the fund, so we're looking at spending those funds available to us.
Any questions? Motion passes. Approval of consent agenda.
Mr. President, I move that the board approve the January ninth, two thousand and twenty-three consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. I'd like to read the donations that we received this month. We received a donation of eighty dollars from employees of Public Water Supply District Number Two to Three Trails Preschool. A donation of twelve hundred dollars for gifts for holiday party, holiday party cookies and lights at Rock Island Church to Northwood Schools, Northwood School. A donation of a thousand dollars for fifty-one children's coats from Spire to Eastwood Hills Elementary School. A donation of a gift basket worth fifty dollars from Cynthia Wesley to Robinson Elementary. A donation of underwear and joggers worth eight hundred and thirty dollars for boys and girls from CBiz Benefits and Insurance to Raytown Schools Great Expectation Before and After Care Department. Donation of gloves and masks from Brian, Brian Finn at Digital Alley to West Ridge Elementary School. A donation of small toy for each child, of a small toy for each child worth seven hundred and ninety-five dollars total from Michael Burgen's at, at Hands to Heart to Fleetwood Elementary. A donation of basketball and football for recess worth fifty dollars from Tamara Roland Dorsey to Robinson Elementary. We thank and greatly appreciate everyone who's donated to us this month. And now we can move to adjourn.
Mr. President, I move the board adjourn the regular board meeting, Board of Education meeting. Mr. President, I move the board adjourn the regular board meeting, Board of Education meeting at seven thirty-two P M.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Meeting adjourned.